It is 6 o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is in session. Let me read some things to us in regard to the issue of COVID-19. Due to the recent increase of coronavirus, COVID-19 positive cases in Kerr County, and we will hear more about that later from Chief Maloney. Standard safety protocols will be observed by the city council, city staff, and citizen visitors attending the workshop and the council. Masks are voluntary and highly encouraged. Six-foot distance seating will be observed and visitor seating will be designated. Visitor overflow will be in the city hall lobby where social distancing will also be observed. The Zoom platform will also be active during this meeting. Instructions for Zoom callers. The Zoom moderator will open Zoom and begin accepting calls at 5:15. The deadline to call and register is now past 5:45. I won't go further into that. Citizens may view and hear the city council workshops on Spectrum Channel 2 or by live streaming via the city's website. City council workshops are recorded and the recordings are posted on the city's website. Written comments will be accepted for any agenda item and you send those to the city secretary. At this time, we are going to have our prayer and pledge by Councilmember Hughes. Will you stand, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and grace as we begin this council meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Help us grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Help us honor you with hearts of obedience and words that are full of truth and love. Father, we ask for your continued protection during this COVID crisis. Provide relief for our frontline workers. As we grieve precious lives lost and vulnerable lives threatened, help us stand strong in the face of an uncertain future. Above all, guide us to do what is pleasing to you and give us peace. I ask these things in your holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One thing, as we come ahead. As we come to our announcements of community interest, Councilmember Hughes prayed for our first responders and those involved in responding to COVID. I want to say to you that the hospital is really getting slammed with COVID patients, more than they have ever had through the entire pandemic. And this afternoon, I was working on how do we get encouragement and support to the staff? And Lisa Winter said one of the great ways is to bring letters of encouragement by and they'll post them on, well, posting boards and so forth. And then, or to send them to the hospital, but they need some encouragement and support. All right, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those words, too. I know that things are pretty hectic here. We have just two announcements tonight. Both of these events are on Saturday, but they're both fun events and one of them goes to a really good cause and that's the UGRA River Cleanup. That is Saturday morning from 8:00 to 10:00. We invite everybody to come join us. The city of Kerrville team will be working to clean up riverbanks, roads, and public spaces. And we're going to meet in Louise Hayes Park. If you turn left down the road, main road off of Thompson Drive and then go back to your left, we're going to start there and probably work our way up to the Deterred Center. So cleaning the whole way. We encourage everybody to come out and join us. We've got Snowflake Donuts is donating kolaches and donuts to us. So that's enough to get me out there. And that'll be a fun event and we encourage everyone to come out. And then, Saturday afternoon, starting at 4:00, we have the Kerrville River Roadster Show. We had this event two years ago. Obviously, we didn't get to have it last year, but two years ago, we had 90 cars and we're hoping for even more this year. Food and drinks, Buzzy's Barbecue will be there. Barrow Pizza, Dandelions, and Nobility. And The Flashbacks is a local group that, they're fantastic. They start at 4:30, so I would encourage everyone to come out for that, too. And then, one last announcement. I don't have a slide for it. Councilmember Hughes may want to join in when I'm done. But there's been an unusually large number of owner-surrendered dogs this week at the Kerr County Animal Shelter. So I encourage everyone to go to their site, take a look. If you need a dog, if you know someone who needs it, if you look on there, those tough spaces will break your heart.
Yes, the shelter is closed on the weekends. And even if you could foster, it would help significantly because we're trying to keep those euthanasia numbers down. And with the influx of animals that have come in, not only dogs, but cats as well, we're having trouble keeping up. So foster an animal and spay and neuter your pets, please.
So check those out, Kerr County Animal Shelter, Pets Alive. Both of their Facebooks can give you some information if they need your help. Thank you.
All right. Any other announcements of community interest?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a couple. Tomorrow, at the Doyle Community Center, it's going to be a wonderful day. The air conditioning, the new air conditioning is going to be turned on and we are so excited. The grand opening for the Doyle Center will be on October 9th. We'll actually take possession on about September 9th. And so on October 9th, we'll be having a grand opening. Everyone will be invited. We'll have much, much more information, but just kind of wanted to get the word out there. And then, the second thing that's happening in October has to do with cars, but a different type of cars than this Saturday. This will be another drag race at the airport. And it'll be on October 23rd. And they're going to do some things that they hadn't done last year. They'll have some static displays and some things just to kind of get to know a little bit more about the airport. But we also need volunteers to direct traffic and park cars. And so for those who are doing that, it's free admission, of course. So if you will email me, let me know that you would like to help. We'd love to have, we're going to need probably a two dozen people. So please let me know or let the airport know.
Yeah, there was, what, 3,000 in attendance last year?
Yeah, 3,000.
And we expect to have more this year.
No, wait. I was going to announce that the drag races.
Sorry. I'll sign you up as a volunteer.
It was a big time last year, I'll tell you. Yeah. Okay. Let me make some announcements about our procedures and then we'll move to the Visitor Citizens Forum. Citizen, our public participation is available by calling in via Zoom, emailing, or using the city hall Dropbox beforehand. And all of those instructions are provided online and in the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on public hearing items will be able to call in before the individual agenda item is introduced or read into the record. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they are to come to the microphone in front of either seating area and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for the council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. I want to thank everyone in advance for helping to respect these rules of procedure. And now we come to our citizen forum. Time allows citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. And Ms. McLaughlin, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. We have four. One had to leave, but the second one is L. Brent Bates.
Well, I'll go ahead and remind you, no discussion may take place and no action may be taken. Since items are not posted, the council discussed subjects raised, but may, well, not discuss the subject raised, but may refer questions to the staff or others. And they have four minutes to speak.
Yes, Brent Bates, 434 Forest Ridge. I wanted to come and commend Development Services. I finally got commentary on my building plans. They've had them for 21 days. They're supposed to give you a comments in 10 days. The fire marshal has had his for 105 days without any comments. So I'm real pleased to finally get comments. I have filed for an appeal, an immediate appeal. That'll happen over the next 10 days. By the way, there is 14,192 Kerrville delay days. Development Services has been in possession of plans, facts, and figures for 14,192 days without giving comments or giving a determination on a set of plans. So I'm here today to, one, let you all know that I have filed an appeal. I'm suggesting to council that you not have any ex parte communication, which means that if you talk to the city attorney or any of the city staff in regards to my appeal, that's a violation of what they call ex parte communication. Three of you have already engaged in that. The two new ones, I'm suggesting you don't go down that route, okay? We'll end up litigating all of this in the final matter, but the reality is this, you all have a severe problem in Development Services. As somebody that has developed here for 30 years, I put the roof on the pavilion when the city had no money and didn't want to do anything. And the little downtown group of whoever those people were ran out of money and quit doing it. You know, the people play on Little League fields that I built back in the 90s. My footprint is all over here. In fact, I did a calculation the other day. Almost three-quarters of 1% of the tax revenues come out of my projects. And to have to fight the Development Services the way that I have had to for this building is just unconscionable. And you all are the five people that sit over the top of it. And if you don't start digging into it, in fact, in council chambers, I informed you that there has been a felonious act in altering my permit and resubmitting it into the electronic system. And then they used that to shut me down. So I have a building that's basically 90% complete and it's been sitting dead in the water for a year. And all this is going to come out. All of it will be known. In fact, I'm going to start coming here every two weeks and start letting you all have a little bit more information, a little bit more information. Not necessarily about just my situation. You know, for instance, one of the things that I'm concerned about is fire flow. I asked to receive the fire flow throughout the city out of the fire hydrants. What actual flow has been done? Because out at my site, I did a fire flow test and I got almost 40% less than what the calculated fire flow that was given to me two years previously. Fortunately, my building doesn't burn. And so the actual fire load of my building only requires 900 gallons, but there's less than 1,300 gallons comes out of the hydrant. And how we're a Class A fire community with less than 1,500 gallons, which is the bare minimum for doing that, is a question that if I was sitting y'all's desks, I'd be figuring out. Because it looks like to me there's been a lot of stuff going on that you all need to be made aware of. You're not going to get it by just sitting up there and accepting whatever you're told by whoever you're told. So I just admonish you, please, you know, we'll deal with the last one in regards to the appeal, but I strongly suggest that you don't engage in ex parte communication. And with that, I'm off to go play old man softball. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Sheri Snyder.
Hello. I'm actually here with a question and I'd like to be educated. What is the assurance of election integrity at our city level?
Ms. Snyder, you need to state your name and your address.
Okay. Sheri Snyder, 330 Willow Bend Drive, Center Point, Texas.
I'm sorry, in this citizens forum, we cannot respond to questions?
Oh, okay. So you can't enlighten or educate me about election integrity on a local level? Because you can't answer a question?
No, not in this center.
Okay. How do I get a question answered?
Is there a way we can have maybe staff give a response? Is that okay, Mr. Hayes?
Oh, right now?
Legally, no, no, not now, but legally give counsel and the citizen a response?
Yes, sir. Have you submitted your telephone number and contact information? We can contact you and go over that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Stricki.
Shelly, I'm going to wave. Thank you very much.
That's all, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. We now come to the consent agenda. And Ms. McLaughlin, are there any items that have been pulled? And then I have two.
One of the citizens has pulled 3F.
3F, okay. I would like to pull 3E and 3G.
And I would like to pull 3C and 3D.
Okay, 3C, 3D, okay.
Looks like we're going to approve A, B, and H. Is that correct?
A, B, and H.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, and H as presented.
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
H, I, and J.
Yeah, I was like, hold on.
Yeah, scroll down just a little bit more. H, I, and J.
I still second that motion.
All right.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add on a wonderful project and that's a grassroots project that has happened in our community. And we're all going to be able to enjoy it at Christmas time with Down at the River. So I just think that deserves an attaboy.
Okay, let's take these in order. 3C, Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I just wanted some help from staff in explaining why all those bids were rejected. Could you help me?
So we really had a couple elements going on here. One was that we had incomplete bids on two of the bids. And on two of the bids, they were well outside of what we felt like the acceptable price range was compared to what the original engineering estimates were. And so for that reason, we are, you know, basically recommending to council to reject all of those bids. You'll see on the item below that, I'll go ahead and text that.
Ties into that, if you'll explain.
Yeah, so it does tie in with 3D. Essentially, the bid that we received from that bidder was for the HVAC component only. And there were two major components to the original bid. That was HVAC and lighting. And so we're recommending rejecting all of the bids for both incompleteness as well as price in regards to 3C. And then, we are recommending utilizing emergency authorization on 3D because that bid was specifically for the HVAC component. And we do have essentially an HVAC system that has completely, yeah, completely failed at the library. And so given that we're in August and September timeframe, we need to get that HVAC system repaired immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Replaced, essentially.
Needs to be done today.
Yes.
I had the same question, so I'm glad those were asked. And I wanted to clarify, we received bids from Ever Ready Electric. Did they propose to do the same thing with the HVAC and not the lighting, too?
Again, it was an incomplete bid, so we received what we felt was a somewhat adequate bid for the lighting comporation, but it was not satisfactory.
Other way around for that one.
Yeah. Essentially, we had an HVAC bidder bid partially on one, a lighting contractor bid partially on the other, and had two incomplete bids.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to vote on C and D at the same time?
But separate, right?
It doesn't matter to me. We can vote on them at the same time.
Just to make sure we get it right, let's, do we have a motion on 3C?
I'll make a motion to reject the bids for Butler Holsworth Memorial Library. It would be 2021-0824.
All right. Any discussion? You got a second? Okay, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hands, okay? Okay, 3D on the construction agreement with Trademark Brown Incorporated. Do I hear a motion on that?
I move to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the construction agreement with Trademark Brown.
I'll second.
You got a second? Okay, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. All right. The 3E, I pull that because from what I'm hearing, a lot of people in the community don't understand the EIC and how it operates and their source of income. So I would like for Mr. Hoppy to give us a brief summary of that.
So the Economic Improvement Corporation is a standalone corporation. It is a component unit of the city, but they do have their own standalone charter. It was created and voted upon by the Kerrville community in the early 90s. They are funded through a half-cent sales tax. So every half cent of $1 that is spent in the community is rebated back to the community and that is for economic development purposes purely. And there's a multitude of different elements that are provided for within state statute that can provide economic development within the community. But again, it does have to meet that test that it is for economic development. Is that, I know that's a very high-level summary, but is that what you were looking for?
Yeah. Give me a ballpark figure. In the course of a year, what would they receive?
Approximately $4 million in revenues.
About $4 million a year, okay. All right, okay. All right. Well, I will make the motion we pass 3E on the EIC budget for fiscal year 2022. Any discussion? Got a second?
Yeah, I just have a question. On the administrative service fee, what's the reason that they're going to be paying another $10,000 to the city for?
Yeah. So we had discussion with the EIC a number of years ago. That level had been set at $100,000 for a number of years, probably over a decade. We had conversation with them, reset that amount to $185,000 two years ago with the intention that it would increase just because of inflationary purposes, about $5,000 a year stepping up to, stepping up over a number of years. We did not increase that amount last year because of austere budgets and because of COVID and pandemic reasons. And so we were just kind of staying in line with that trajectory that had been created before. And so that would have been $190 last year, but we didn't step it up. $195 was this year.
What inflations are we looking at in terms of the additional fee for them?
Yeah, certainly it's the inflationary levels of labor and just keeping the lights on.
All right. Make a motion on 3E. Do we have a second?
Yes, yes.
All right. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hands? Okay, thanks. It passes unanimously. Okay. 3F?
We had a citizen, we had a citizen pull this one. George Berudi.
Okay.
It is a really long delay when you watch it on your phone, just so you know. Okay, George Berudi, 1616 Glen Road. So just to be clear, we're talking about 3F, the admin services. Okay. Not totally lost. Okay, so the question I have is really kind of one that I keep asking and I don't really get the answer. And it's not a matter of me looking for the answer I'm wanting. It's a matter of actually getting a real answer. The admin services contract describes the engineering portion of it in particular. City agrees to provide engineering and project management services to include design bid and construction phases for EIC-funded projects that involve improvements to city and/or public property. So they're essentially going to provide the engineering services for projects that are being developed by the city. If city contracts out for services, it also says if city contracts out for services on project, then EIC will pay that also through project funding. So the question is, you're currently, as far as this administrative services contract, agreeing that the EIC will pay you, the city. $95,000 is being allocated to engineering. That represents about 2,000 man-hours in engineering. A full employee, basically. The question is, why is the funding, EIC is like a bank. Why is the funding mechanism paying for engineering services when they don't actually develop any of the projects? They really should be paying for engineering services within the project funding agreements that they're funding. So I'm not really sure I understand administratively how engineering is providing a single hour of service to EIC.
Okay. And Mr. Hoppy, can you go over that?
Yeah, so I think it's an oversimplification. As you recall, there's a number of projects that happen throughout the year. Sometimes they are construction projects, sometimes they're not. For instance, the EIC, just this very last year, funded a feasibility analysis of River Trail to the downtown area. That wasn't necessarily a city project. That was really something that EIC was moving forward on. And there was quite a bit of engineering services that were provided in consultation for that project in back and forth with the project engineer. There's certainly a number of different professionals, as an example, that looked at that project in a number of ways. But the project was facilitated through our engineering department. Certainly, there was a lot of consultation with our civil engineering department. So that's just an example, but on any given year, you're right, there may be city projects or other projects that engineering consultation services are provided for. And sometimes it's, in fact, directly for things that the EIC is looking at.
Okay, so a 10-second response is basically, in that one example, the more proper way to fund that would be through the feasibility study cost that EIC funded. So it would make more sense to fund the entire project feasibility study in that example through that project funding. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
But does that, does that mean then that they're getting charged twice? So one for the fee for engineering and the contract? And then when we do any other type of project, they also pay for the engineering there?
No, again, this is a catch-all. So there's a number. Again, engineering, project management services, legal services, financial services, administrative services, investment office services, regulatory financial reporting services, production of the annual audit, project reports, staff reports. So there's a number of things that we have alone. We have never gotten to the point with the EIC. And EIC has never requested that we're doing a line item element and doing it on a per-hour basis. You know, we did some rough approximations several years ago. We're providing probably closer to a quarter million plus of services. And that was the justification really for kind of that annual step-up increase. But I think they have continued to feel that the city provides a tremendous amount of service for the value that they get. But no, they're not being double-charged.
Is there a motion on 3F?
I will move that we approve the agreement with EIC for administrative services.
I'll second that.
Motion's second. All in favor, with the F raised hand, it passes unanimously. Now, on 3G, I ask to pull that for this reason. The Kerr Economic Development Corporation is doing a really good job. Gil Salinas is with us here tonight, Teresa Metcalf, doing a great job. And I will tell you, I compare this to 30 years ago when I was on what was then the Kerr Economic Development Foundation. And we didn't do great. and we didn't do great, uh, in terms of, of attracting businesses and finding ways to strengthen existing businesses. But the KDC is doing an exceptional job of attracting some businesses that are paying, that are going to pay very good wages and, and benefits as well. And, uh, doing things to strengthen entrepreneurs in our community who have started businesses or want to start businesses. And there's just some really good things happening in that. In fact, the econo- KDC is getting international recognition for what they're doing. But I want to speak to one thing. When you hear Gil Salinas' report about the potential businesses, the ones that are already committed to come, like Killdeer Mountain Manufacturing and Gulf Avionics and others, uh, some folks kind of say, wait, is that too much? You know, are we getting? But the, the reality is that Gil and Teresa work with businesses that express an interest in us. And right now, Kerrville is getting a lot of attention from businesses that want to be here. Quality of life is just so important in attracting these businesses. But it's a matter of, folks are looking at us and saying, hey, we want to be there. And, uh, yeah, we don't want, we don't want to grow like New Braunfels did, it is, is. But at the same time, we really need good-paying jobs here. And, uh, so, anyway, that's my editorial.
Is he here?
Yeah.
He's here.
Oh, there he is, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I had a, a question that I just wanted, um, I would have asked you before if I had not looked at this before the meeting, and I just caught it. So, well, this was one of them. So you're asking, so in the proposed budget for this year, you have sixty-two thousand five hundred. We have, uh, last year projected income, and this is funding towards KDC from the city. And last year, thirty-nine thousand five hundred. What is that increase going towards? I, I watched the EIC meeting, and I, I know that they have a big jump in, in funding for this too. And I don't want to speak for them, but I know you're on that. But there was a motion that was put forth, and there was no second for a really long time. There's a lot of discussion that happened. So just some background information there?
Can I, can I say, may I make one comment? And then before you, just as a member of EIC, one thing I think that, that took a, it took a while to, to uncover and was a question made by a new EIC member, was in fact the, um, portion of the budget last year that was planned to be paid down from the reserves. So the reserve had been built up over time. And I remember having this discussion on the council side last year, not on the EIC, but on being very lean and also, um, using the reserves that had been built so that the ask wasn't so great coming off of COVID. Now, I think what we came to at EIC, what, at least in my mind, I came to, was the discrepancy really, if you take away, if you add the reserve that was spent down last year, the ask is only what, fifteen thousand? Am I right?
Yeah.
Fif- ten, ten, fifteen thousand dollars different than what was spent last year. That's all I wanted to say on the, on my side from EIC.
Yeah.
And then now I just let you.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, so following up on your question, um, originally, I guess it was when I first got here about two and a half years ago. Uh, originally, we're at about a two-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar budget. And then last year, uh, or last fiscal year, that's when, you know, the KDC board went back to the stakeholders and said, okay, we now need to start really looking at developing our planning and going after some companies. So that's when everybody, the stakeholders agreed to bring it up to four-hundred-thousand dollars as far as having an operating budget for the organization. Uh, so we started the fiscal year, and just a few months in, sure enough, COVID happened, which nobody was expecting. And what we did is, we know there's some surplus. Why don't we just, you know, because we're feeling calls from, uh, from the public as far as, you know, small businesses, industry, they were losing their employees, employees didn't want to come into work. Supply chain was affected, so on and so forth. So we said, and I remember, you know, Teresa and myself, you know, talking to the businesses, it's like, well, you need to pivot, you need to shift, you need to tighten the belt, so on and so forth. And we just felt like, well, we need to do the same thing in order to be able to, uh, be respectful of what was happening. So we started, uh, so we came back with a voluntary, uh, uh, budget cut for that particular fiscal year. And then a year ago today, uh, coming into this fiscal year that we're in as well. Uh, but we've already got through some of those reserves, and we're now in a position where we would like to get back, not just on track to where we're at, uh, two years ago at a four-hundred-thousand-dollar operating budget, but a little bit more to get us where we need to be by the end of the year.
And when you speak about the reserves, where does that, is that a line item in your budget there?
It's in, um,
Yeah, I missed it?
Yeah, I'm telling you, one hundred, the, the carryover income.
This is a carryover.
Oh, that's what it's titled?
Yeah, it's been there, I think, a year and a half, maybe a couple of years before I got here. It's just been accumulating.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, just coming back to, to just economic development in general, and Mayor, you, you had mentioned this. Uh, what we're seeing today is, is, and this is part of what we're looking to do now, we're operating on a two-year roadmap. Because when, you know, I first got here, we weren't necessarily prepared to really embark on a strategic plan as it pertains to economic development. We already had the twenty-fifty, uh, vision comprehensive plan, which was a great tool. But because of what we're seeing, and also the success as far as, you know, uh, some of the companies coming in, uh, we're now in a position to start redefining what economic development is for our community. Uh, again, going back to bringing in, you know, good-paying jobs, companies, uh, increasing, you know, wages, capital investment. Now, we're in a position to start, I'm going to use the word pivot again, pivoting or shifting to place-making, because that's what we're seeing. Companies now are looking to go into communities that have built a place that's going to attract talent. Uh, so that's what we're seeing, that's part of our planning efforts to get us there as far as now having that vision. And really, now economic development, going from tr- traditional economic development in Kerrville to now really defining it as our job is now to make this an amazing place that's going to be attracting the talent, which in turn is going to be attracting the companies. Uh, there's quite a few communities that are, that are doing that, and a lot of it has to do because of COVID.
And I might add that funding, uh, yes, from EIC, but also the county commissioners have voted for the funding for KDC, as has K-Pub, so.
Uh, Gil, on, uh, uh, Business and Innovation Forum, tell us a little bit about what's happening with that.
Okay, so that is scheduled for the first week in November, and that's going to be a three-day, uh, conference that we're going to be hosting, uh, here in downtown Kerrville. Uh, the Arcadia, we've, uh, reserved that, and that's going to be kind of like our, our home base. And we've got several speakers that are coming in. We're anticipating about two hundred, uh, to two hundred and fifty, uh, people to come in for the event. Uh, half of those will be from the area as far as entrepreneurs, innovators. And that's what we're interested in, in, uh, looking at, as well as small businesses, to come in and have access to some high-quality speakers, some experts in their respective, respective fields that they probably won't have, you know, if, you know, they won't, uh, uh, be leaving Kerrville. And on the flip side, we're partnering with the Office of the Governor. They're going to have a, uh, a small business series, an expo in conjunction with our event. Hence, that's why it's going to be three days. And they're attracting about somewhere between three hundred and four hundred businesses from the hill country. And they're having three of these in the state of Texas, uh, starting with, you know, next fiscal year. And in central Texas is just this one here in Kerrville. So we were, uh, in a great position. Uh, I mean, it was a great phone call, you know, when they called us up and they said, look, we know you're looking at an innovation forum, so on and so forth. Uh, we would love to have something there. And we said, well, we would love to have it too. So, uh, so they're going to be coming in, they're bringing in their own speakers as well. Uh, and again, this is, uh, by design, we wanted to do it in downtown. We're going to be having concurrent sessions, uh, and, uh, several businesses downtown start spreading that around. Uh, they're going to be staying in our community, uh, eating in our places. Uh, and again, we're just bringing in, uh, you know, we've got an aerospace panel. Uh, we've got one on film, you know, there's a, uh, uh, you know, film commissioner actually reached out as well. And it's like, well, the governor's their boss, right? It's like, well, we know you're doing X, Y, Z, we would love to be a part of that. So we're having a little film, uh, session in there as well. Uh, and, uh, and there's going to be some, well, I can't get it to a head, but there'll, there'll be some very nice things happening there as far as filming is concerned. Uh, and again, it's, it's, we're hoping that this will be a first annual, that we can follow through with a second one. Uh, and it's all designed to bring, again, uh, attention to the area as far as, uh, the recruitment of businesses, but also fostering our local businesses and helping. And this is a result of COVID, what do we need to do to better diversify our economic base? And if you can create a hotbed of entrepreneurs in your community, I mean, that's, that's how it starts. So we're very excited about that particular area.
Sounds, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, Gil knows this, but for fourteen years, I lobbied for a business incubator to help local folks start businesses. And the Innovation Forum and things that he and Teresa are doing encompasses that in a, in a great way. All right, do we have a motion on this item with, uh, three G?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the agreement with the Cur Economic Development Corporation.
I'll second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, let it be known by the upper raised hand, and it is unanimous. Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, four A, Ms. McElhanan, will you read this item in, please?
Yes, sir, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. An ordinance authorizing issuance, sale, and delivery of up to seven million dollars in aggregate principal amount of city privilege combination, passing revenue certificate of obligation, series twenty twenty-one. Providing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual added lien tax and applying to certain surplus revenues of the city's waterworks and sewer system.
All right, thank you. Uh, I, I would like to lead off. Um, I, I, I must say that I am disappointed that we are not going to move forward with the CO because it delays getting adequate housing for the police and fire, the possibility of paying much more because of interest rates. Um, and then a, sometimes a failure to understand how cities use debt to do projects. Uh, this will come up in a bond election in May, and I hope the proponents of the petition will support that. But the other thing I would say, well, let me say in terms of debt. You know, we got a double-A rating from Standard and Poor's, and they're very complimentary of how we handle debt. And cities, cities corporation, like most corporations, you got, you've got debt. It's a matter of how, how you handle it. However, what we see in this petition effort is democracy at work. Citizens working together to express their belief that something this CO should be stopped. In the Republican Women's Luncheon in spring of twenty eighteen, when I was running for mayor, we had the congressional candidates and the city candidates, and the CEOs came up. And I said, you know, it is a way to get, an important way for a city to get a project done. But I went on and added, because there was some objection about CEOs. I went on and added, you only have to have five percent of the voters signed on a petition to stop it. So I'm disappointed, but I recognize this is part of how we operate as, as a democracy. Let me ask if there are other, um, questions from the council, then we'll go to others.
I, I don't have any questions. I, I understand that it is our democracy at work, and, uh, uh, I think the thing that I think is so important for our public to remember is that if it does not pass in May, that we will be without means to do anything about this for three years. So it is just vitally, vitally, vitally important that, uh, that everyone come out and vote for it.
I'd just like to make a clarification on the statements that are made that we keep saying it's going to be on the ballot in May. We, uh, council has actually not finalized that, and by the petition, that doesn't automatically put it on the ballot, does it?
Right.
Council will still have to take that action, so, so just a clarification for the public.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's an assumption.
Right, yeah, it hasn't been put on the ballot, but that's the earliest one. Clarification.
I have something else, so. Yeah, I was never given a chance because a lot of these conversations were had in, um, when they weren't agenda items, you know, and, and so, you know, I, I had a, I did have the question, why, why do you support a cer- certificate of obligation in this situation? And, and although I responded to an email, the constituent, um, came in and, and didn't acknowledge that response. So I'd like to respond and just explain why I did support this. And I, Mayor, I really like what you had to say about it is the democratic process at work, and it is. And so I respect that, but I do also um, want to just share my feeling on that, which is, you know, um, I have, I have heard people say that they don't think this facility is necessary, and that scares me. I think that it, I think that it is necessary. And I'm sitting here saying that because I've done a lot of things to reach my own conclusion in the situation, uh, which was spoken to the former and current police chiefs, one-on-one in multiple hour-long sessions to talk about and determine the current situations and needs for a facility. I've toured on more than one occasion the police and fire and municipal court facilities. I've reviewed a current comprehensive facility needs assessment. I've learned about the deficiencies. I've read and reviewed the Kerrville twenty-fifty comprehensive plan. I've read previous budget books and am now working through our current budget book. I've actually spoken to many first responders who live every day and work in inadequate facilities and learned how this impacts them on a daily basis. I've learned the reasons why police officers have relocated. In almost every conversation, facilities being mentioned. I've spent hours learning and understanding our debt structure and how it functions. And I feel that it is my responsibility as a council member to understand important issues as fully as possible. While I welcome that exact same level of involvement from all members of the community, I don't expect that most citizens will engage in this level of research. I certainly wouldn't have known what I know now had I not been on council. In my opinion, this is why we have a representative form of government. I respectfully disagree that voter approval on the situation was the best path forward and feel that providing a stable measure without raising taxes, in fact, while at the same time lowering taxes to provide funding to move forward, was the best case in this situation. I believe that this is a want. I, I, I believe that this is a need and not a want. Had I felt that this was a want, something we wanted but didn't maybe need to have, then I certainly would have felt that doing an election was the right thing to do. So, again, to your response, Mayor, I full-heartedly believe in the democratic process. Um, and I, and I respect what the outcome of this was, but I still support my feeling personally on why I wanted to move forward with this. And this is the first opportunity I've had to share that feeling, so appreciate that, thank you.
Any other discussion by council?
I just, I would also just like to add that, um, now that this will be going to a bond election, if it's in May or if it's in November, now we are restricted to only being able to use property ta- property tax money to fund it. So, um, we potentially could be looking now at a property tax increase.
Okay, uh, Ms. McElhanan, do we have speakers on this?
Yes, sir, and, um, we also had two emailed comments, which I made copies of, and they're at each of your seats. Nikki Keynes.
Wait, is this a public hearing?
It was a public hearing, sir, however, now it's no longer a public hearing.
It's agenda item, that's a public hearing, though.
Uh-huh, but council decided it wasn't going to be a public hearing, and they have that choice.
That wasn't announced prior to the meeting.
Can, Mr. Hayes, can you clarify why this cannot be a public hearing?
Well, you're not, it's a public hearing in conjunction with adopting the bonds. And I, I think the consensus is obviously you're going to accept the petition as a legal petition and not vote on the bonds, and so you don't need the public hearing. Now, that being said, it's an agenda item, and anyone here has a right to speak to that item.
Yes.
My concern, thank you.
My name is Nikki Keynes, I reside at eighteen oh nine Mountain Laurel. Mr. Mayor, city coun- city council members, I'm aware that anyone can speak before you, but I am here to speak from the city, the city voter's perspective. Approximately one month ago, I heard about the city council's proposed use of certi- Approximately one month ago, I heard about the city council's proposed use of certificates of obligation to fund a new public safety complex. I learned that the KPD was in terrible disrepair, had been progressively getting worse, and that the city was aware. Within a week, I joined a group of 31 petitioners, and all but two of them were new acquaintances. In a mere three weeks, we walked Curville neighborhoods, and I personally collected more than 200 signatures in opposition of your using the CEOs. I'm not here to sow seeds of discontent, but to present why almost 1,100 Curville voters have lost trust in the city council. Of this sampling, almost every voter on the petitions eagerly signed had numerous questions and comments such as, they expressed dismay regarding the conditions of the KPD and asked why it hadn't been a priority over other large city projects. They asked why it wasn't addressed in the 2019 or 2020 elections. And I'll add that it was approved in the proposed 28 budget for a voter bond. They wanted to know what exactly does the first $7 million cover? Where's the project site, and what is the cost of the land? Lastly, and sadly, they said, we figure our taxes could go up, but the lack of transparencies using CEOs leads them to believe that there would be undue influence, conflicts of interest, and inflated costs. All of you are the face of, of Curville, and the citizens depend upon you to keep them safe and ensure our quality of life. The public safety complex should have been the number one capital project, not just this year, but more than two years ago at a minimum. Even your current 21, 2021 budget doesn't address the funding as it's listed on line 14 as to be determined. I don't know, does that mean 2023? Mr. Mayor, you stated that you and the council were elected to make wise and solid decisions, but you lack the trust of these voters. In fact, voters have not voted on a GO bond since 1987. What the city council has now is a more informed and invigorated community who want to be involved in the process and project by voting on this funding. Any delay in this process is being viewed as a lack of your trust in the voters because if there were actual plans, the city voters have not been included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Monroe.
Good evening, city council, mayor, and city staff. I'm Robin Monroe, excuse me, address is 32 Chaparral Drive. I am here today to ask why city council refuses to take responsibility for the unsafe work environment of our Curville Police Department. In council members' own words, you have stated that the building is unsafe. It's a liability, that it's unhealthy, and that these officers deserve better. I think we all agree on that. And based on what you said, you said this was an urgent project. So Mayor, you also quoted that the Let Us Vote petitioners, you were very saddened if we were going to be successful because if we were successful, it was going to delay this project, this very urgent project. So that made me very curious. And so what I did is I reviewed city budgets, and I went back. And in 2017, there was a public safety center listed there for proposed funding of $9 million. In 218, the proposed funding was the same. But at that point, we had a new city manager, Mark McDonald. And Mark McDonald shifted that debt to voter-approved debt for $10 million, going through a general obligation bond. Mayor, you approved that. You approved that budget. You went, stayed the course, and did it for the next year's budget in 219. And you, Mayor, stayed the course on that to put it before the voters. That was going to be the first time voters in the city of Curville have voted on a general bond election in 33 years. After that, we come to the next budget. The next budget is where we have three city council members that were present and worked on the 2020 fiscal year budget. In that budget, it was Ms. Clarkson, the mayor, and Ms. Eichner. In that budget, we had the Public Safety Center proposed funded for 2020. The 2020 budget you all worked on and reviewed, you completely dropped that project. It was eliminated from the next year's budget, not even a line item. Now it shows up on other budgets to be determined. I went as far as 2023. I don't see any clearly defined project. I don't see any proposal for funding. And what saddens me the most is in December of 219, the taxpayers paid $150,000 for a feasibility study that gave you all a clearly defined accountable scope of work of 10 to 12 million dollars for a building. And at that time, city had property that could probably work that we wouldn't have had to buy. So my point is to you right now, if it was so urgent and you cared so much about our police department, why did you drop it from the 2020 budget? That's what I want to know. Why has it not been put on there now? They have a building that is falling down around their ears, and you sit here and tell us that you care and concern. Well, we voters are now watching because we do care and concern. And so we're going to be watching you for your wisest decisions you make from this point on to bring this up and do the right thing for these men and women who give their lives, put their lives on the line every day. I want to thank you for your time respectfully.
Thank you.
Bethany Puccio.
I'm Bethany Puccio. I am community organizer for Let Us Vote, and I live at 418 Crest Ridge Drive. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and city staff. I have here in my hands, this is the petition, a copy of the petition, proof of what the citizens of Curville have clearly stated. We want to be included in decisions on debt. We want you to let us vote. I can tell you that after gathering well over 200 signatures myself and knocking on hundreds of doors, that I am confident I have a very good sense of where your constituents are at. I heard countless times that they believe that outside of unforeseen emergencies, we should always be able to vote on debt. I can tell you, Mr. Mayor and council, that this was an easy win. Had we had more time and more manpower, we could have brought you thousands of signatures. After hundreds of conversations, I can tell you that an easy eight out of 10 people eagerly signed this. They want more accountability and involvement in how our money is spent. I stand here as one person tonight, but I am part of the overwhelming majority. This right here is proof of that. Past decisions to move forward with elective projects such as the sports complex, River Trail Extension, Arcadia, and others, instead of putting our money into necessities like our PD, have caused frustration with many. Many express great frustration over the Sydney Baker Bridge project. While this is not connected in any way to this particular project, it was a cause for great frustration, and the result has been a loss of trust with city leadership. For reasons that remain unclear, Mayor Blackburn chose to lead the city to reprioritize public safety, which is a necessity below elective projects such as parks, the River Trail Extension, renovations, and sidewalks across the Sydney Baker Bridge. The Public Safety Complex project was placed on the back burner. I am dismayed that our police have not been one of our highest priorities. Public safety is one of our most basic needs, particularly in a city with a larger, older population. Council keeps claiming the downside to the petition is that it could potentially delay addressing the Public Safety Complex for years. However, you don't seem to have an actual plan in place yet to build. As a citizen and taxpayer, I am disappointed to be addressing this need now as opposed to back in 2019 or 2020 when interest rates were still low and building supplies and property were far more affordable. Is it true that under your current plans, we would not begin building in 2023? That seems like that's what I've heard. You've stated that we should trust our elected officials. While this may be true, you should also trust us. We, the people, in the city of Curville can be trusted. We love our city. We care about our law enforcement, and we can be trusted with our money. Why have we met so much resistance to be included in this decision and have an opportunity to hear a clearly defined plan? If leadership cannot be questioned, then can it be trusted? City council invited us into a conversation with them on June 22. We have been eager participants in that conversation and look forward to hearing answers to many of these questions. As we conclude this monumental undertaking, which will allow citizens to vote on city debt for the first time in over three decades, our hope is that it will bring in a new era of greater citizen involvement, greater accountability for money spent and projects done, and ultimately greater trust between the citizens of this great city and its leadership. Thank you.
George Burdi.
That's kind of short. So it's me now, right? Okay. George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So it sounds like most people have talked about most of it, so I'm just going to kind of touch on a couple of things that the mayor brought up. Basically, the, the whole petition is a little misunderstood. Basically, in June, we heard that the city council was beginning a conversation, you know, about this topic. And all that happened was the citizens stood up and joined the conversation in the exact way that the law provides. They tried to tell you in June what their specific thoughts were. And when nobody really responded to that, they got together and talked to those citizens at large and found out that, you know what? About 80 or 90% of the people that were asked were in agreement that the public safety needed to be addressed, the, it was probably going to take debt, but that if the city doesn't have a project defined, they don't really want to know about their borrowing money until they've defined that project. It was as simple as that. And I'll tell you that because that's what happened with me. I knocked on a few doors, and frankly, hardly anybody did anything other than, yeah, I agree with you. I'll just grab up that petition. They did understand what the petition said. They weren't being misled. They understood the problem, and so they just wanted to be a part of it. Now, to some of the things that have been said, as far as the property taxes, GO versus CO, as, as we were told, the CO was going to be used, it was going to be supported by property tax. So there really is no real difference between a $7 million CO at this point in time or a GO. The biggest difference is that we're all talking about, oh, we got to do it right now because the interest rates are really low. Well, guess what? With a GO, you can actually borrow the full amount of the project all at once and fully take advantage of the low interest rates. Yes, it's going to end up being in May. That's not the petitioner's fault. The city could have put it on the November ballot to note, to begin with, chose not to. Then, then you have, what was the other one? Somebody said something about, oh, the, the fear about it might not pass a vote. Again, the burden of that is on council to produce a project that is clearly defined and easily supported. If you put out something that has no answers in it, then clearly people are going to have problems understanding it nor be willing to vote for it. That burden is on council. I fully expect that whatever you define will end up getting passed because you're going to know that people are paying attention, and they're going to pass it. Nobody wants to step aside from the problem, although as previous people have said, I, I was on council. I handed off to you, Mr. Mayor, a plan that was essentially, and it wasn't me, but you know what I'm saying, a plan that had this, this to be addressed, and for some unknown reason, I still don't understand, that thing got set aside. Now, I don't know why. I'm hoping it doesn't happen again. That's the other issue for me personally on this particular issuance of debt is the problem isn't so much the problem today as much as how are we going to plan so that we don't fall into this mess again? We're doing it with our streets. We're doing it with our buildings. If we continue to borrow money to cover our so-called deferred expenses, when are we going to start planning for the future so that we are planning for the replacement and maintenance cost of the infrastructure that we have? That's an obligation we all should be taking seriously. I think that may be it. Yeah. One thing, it was just kind of a clarification. I, I overheard, I didn't overhear it, I heard it here at a meeting, that there was only two ways to, that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Hall.
Good evening. My name's Terry Hall at 118 Independence, and I'm speaking on behalf of Texas Turf, which is a statewide group, as well as We the People, Liberty in Action, which a lot of the petitioners were from our, our group. Mr. Mayor, you said when you introduced the Sydney Baker issue that roads are the top priority according to your polling. And that was the number one thing heard at the doors when petitions, signatures were being gathered. Is this for the Sydney Baker thing? I want to stop that. That was one of the number one things that was heard at the door. That is a controversial, disliked project.
This is not the right topic.
Speak to the issue, please.
I am. I'm telling you what they were saying at the doors. I understand, but I'm also saying about the petition, what the, what the voters are saying at the doors. So anyway, you get the message that this is unpopular. People don't want it, and we want you to kill that project. And I think it's also showing distrust. That was one of the things that was cited as to why they don't trust the city to make the right call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the speaker, sir.
That's the end, okay.
Will we have the written comments read into the record?
Sure. Well, no, we'll just, we will include the written comments in the record, but not read them into. Okay, let's move to 5A. And Ms. McElhanan, if you will read that in for us.
Hold on. Mr. Mayor, are we done, are we done with 4A? Because I would still like to make comments.
Oh.
So I'll go ahead, and you can start my five-minute timer, and I'll take some time out of my, my own time to read some citizen comments. These are the two comments that were given to council. Dear city council members, we are writing, this is from Jack and Elizabeth Myers, 1841 Mountain Laurel. We're writing to let you know our concerns regarding the public safety complex and the use of certificates of obligation to fund the proposed project. We realize there is a need to provide an upgraded facility, but are objecting to the process being used to fund it. It should be put to a vote among the citizens of Curville and not decided by officials that could possibly have a financial gain in the process. A municipal bond would provide more transparency and would be more suitable for taxpayers. We need to put this matter to a vote for the people of Curville. Please keep city business transparent. Sincerely, Jack and Elizabeth Myers. The second letter is from Ruth Crummon at 247 Huntley Road South. Dear Ms. McElhanan, and this was, I guess, addressed to her since they send them to her. I am out of town and cannot attend tonight's city council meeting. I have several questions that I would appreciate answers to, and I'm sure that I'm not the only one who would. Please read my questions under item 4A or visitors forum if the four, item 4A is pulled from the agenda. One, if the city council was aware of the need for a new police station four or five years ago, as minutes and records show, why is it an emergency now? Two, why was 30, about 30 acres of land, which was owned by the city of Curville and could have been used to build a public safety complex, given as a bribe incentive to Lennar Homes to build low-income housing? Three, did the city council have the right to dispose of city-owned land to an out-of-town builder? And four, how did Curville taxpayers benefit from the handover of 30 acres of city-owned land to a wealthy developer headquartered in Miami, Florida? If not the taxpayers, then who did it benefit? Sincerely, Ruth Crummon. Now, I read those into the record for a couple of reasons. One, because, you know, if they were here, they would have wanted that to be heard, and of course, the rest of council received it. And I believe they're public comments that should be heard. But also, and I would have read them regardless of what my personal stance is on those. But also because there are several questions, and I think now is the time. We probably should, you know, if we're going to keep this discussion going, allows some members of staff to respond to some of the questions. You know, they, they're wanting to know several things, and these are some that I, I jotted down.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question? Excuse me for interrupting. Let me, let me, it's a point of order about what you're doing.
Okay.
And so much, if you let, if you let me, if you let me just ask, so you specifically said we weren't going to read those into the record, right?
Yeah.
So now are we going to go ahead and address everything that continued down that road?
No, no, no. We're not going to go into answering all of the questions tonight, Mr. Garcia. But anyway, and you got the letters written, I mean, the letters read, okay?
Yeah, thank you. And I still have some time remaining. And so with all due respect, that point of order did not violate any of the rules, so it wasn't a proper point of order. But these questions should be addressed, you know? Why was this not addressed, addressed previously, this project? What does the $7 million cover? What is the detailed plan? Is there a detailed project? Why was it dropped from previous budgets? With the current plan, would we not begin building until 2023? And those are, I guess, what I jotted down from the questions that were asked of citizens now. Mayor, I guess you have the prerogative to move forward and not allow staff to give us answers to these. But if we can, I'd really appreciate, especially for the public, since they're wanting to know what the answers to those questions are. I'll include my comments with that.
Yeah, those questions will be answered. And I don't know exactly in what form, but I, I would, I would hope that they would be sent to those who have spoken to me. I would hope that they would be sent to those who have spoken tonight. Okay, on 5A, would you read that in, Ms. McElhanan?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2021-23, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $856,000 in principal amount of City of Kerrville, Texas Tax Note Series 2021, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of the annual ad valorem tax and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase letter, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Shelley, can I note that there should be a correction? You reading it, you put 856, and it should be 865.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Hughes.
Okay.
$865,000.
Okay. Is there discussion on this matter?
Do we have a presentation from staff?
I'm happy to provide some brief comments on this, Mayor, if you'd like.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, before you tonight, you do have an ordinance applicable for one reading. This does provide for a short-term tax note related to emergency operations equipment that essentially has been pushed down to local governments related to unfunded mandates, in part in regards to, this is a reactionary element coming from the state of Texas, and the ability for cities and municipalities and other local government entities and being able to operate when the state can't operate their own power grid. And so, in part, this will help provide a financial resource for us to purchase electrical power generation and other equipment that we may need to be able to respond within an emergency situation like we experienced this last February. Happy to answer any details that you may have, any questions you may have.
Well, I must say, unfunded mandate from the state is one more evidence of how the governor and the legislature is taking away decisions from the communities and from the counties, and is happening over and over. In this instance, you got the power failure at the power grid back in February, in part because it was set up without any federal regulation. Had that been there, we might not have the problem we did, but it was set up independent of all of the other states. And now, the legislature is coming to us, so you got to spend this money because of that power failure. And at 4:30 this afternoon, on the news, was the account that the grid may not make it through the summer. So the state has not done all they could do with the power grid, but they're saying to us, you got to pay this. And I think it is, I think it's very unfair, but, I mean, we don't have much choice, so...
Mayor, I'll move that we approve ordinance number 2021-23 on first reading.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Kelly?
Go ahead.
We have a speaker, Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
Peggy McKay. Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. My question on this is that it's $865,000, and it's, is it for the electrical grid, first of all, since it was under this particular ordinance? Was it, is it for strictly electricity? Is the 865, it says annual, do we have to have this 865 every year? Is this a one-time charge cost?
I'm going to ask Mr. Hoppe to address that.
Yeah, so again, this is for equipment, a number of elements of equipment related to emergency operations that will help the city better be able to respond in a storm-type event, particularly when we have electrical-type outages. We are still in the process of sorting through SB3 and all the impacts. In fact, we just received a letter today from TCQ in regards to another city operation that's going to be affected by this bill and the ability to provide utility service at that operation. And so, I don't think that, these are mostly one-time costs because they are equipment-related. Of course, we will have upkeep of that equipment and maintenance that will be potential costs down the road, but the vast majority of these are represented by capital costs, and we are trying to leverage these dollars. We are in the process of applying right now for hazard mitigation grant funding, and so again, we may be, hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, leverage some dollars to help satisfy these unfunded mandates as best to our ability.
What about Ms. McKay's question about, is it annual?
Yes, sir, again, we would anticipate most of these costs would be one-time costs. They may have some annual maintenance elements applied to them down the road, but the vast majority of these are one-time capital costs.
Okay, but it says annual tax. Is that just an oversight, or?
Julie, can you speak to that?
Yes, so that's...
If you'll come podium.
Basically, that's just talking about the way we're going to pay for that. So it'll be basically a two-payment, short-term loan to pay for this, basically what will happen.
Okay.
So it'll be a one-time.
And we don't have any...
We're not spending $865,000 every year, if that's the question.
Okay, and we don't have, when we transfer the year-end excess funds that haven't been used, we can't cover it with something like that rather than taking out another loan?
I mean, that's potential, however, we haven't done any FY21 year-end estimates yet. Those will be coming up. You know, as we start approaching year-end, we'll start doing a lot more work on year-end estimates, so at this time, we just don't know what that's going to be, and that'll be up to council to decide where those funds are transferred to.
Okay, and then when do we have to have this completed?
Well, the action is requested for tonight so that we can go ahead and get started on those. So legislative update just came down to us within the last couple of weeks.
Is there a deadline?
And it's mandated for us to get started on it effective immediately.
Okay.
They don't give us a grace.
Then if it's approved tonight, but we could find excess funds, could we use that to negate that loan?
That's true. We could pay it back sooner if that's what council so chose, you know, chose to do with those excess funds. Or, like Mr. Hoppe said, we're continuously working on finding grant funding. We have a person specifically working on that every day to be able to source some grant funding to be able to pay that, too. So if we can leverage some grant money, we certainly will do that, and then, you know, in whatever capacity for any of these different mandates that we have to do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, that brings up another question. Do we need to have a budget item or mandates, state mandates?
Possibility, but...
Given the Texas legislature, I think so. Although, let me say, Representative Mur and Senator Buckingham are friends and serve us well, and, okay, other discussion on this item? Ms. Hughes, did you make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I seconded.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hands, and it passes unanimously. Okay. All right. Would you read 6A in, Ms. McElhanan?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2021-20, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas fiscal year 2022, providing appropriations for each state department and fund, containing a cumulative clause and containing a savings and severability clause. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Okay. All right, council? Wait, I'm sorry. Julie.
Slide, yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
There it is. It's a one simple slide tonight, so y'all don't have to listen to another hour and a half of this, so just kind of letting you know where we are in the calendar process. So we've had three meetings, three workshops that we've worked through, you know, the water fund, the general fund, and all the other funds regarding budget. Both general fund and water fund are balanced, as you know, and so August 10th, we've presented this budget to you guys, and we've answered several citizen and council questions since that time that I hope were satisfactory answers. We are asking for the ordinance to be approved on first reading, and we will have a second reading on September 14th, so public hearing and first vote will be tonight with the proposed tax rate of .5093, which is lower than the tax rate of 5116 in FY21, as you know, and it is the fourth time in five years that we have lowered the tax rate, so good news there. Second reading, of course, will be on the 14th of September, and I believe that will be at the Keller Theater, if I'm correct on that. The new fiscal budget will start on October 1st, as always, and I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right, council, any questions?
I understood last week, we got some information from staff that there were some pages amended, and we got those pages prepared yesterday on Monday. I also heard that there were more changes that were going to be made, so...
So, yeah, simple answer to that is no revenues or expenses were amended in any way. The revenues and expenses are what you're actually voting on. The rest is part of the presentation, and with, you know, 400 pages, you can imagine, there are a few typos, and so we're constantly editing that to make sure that everything, you know, is wordsmithed and looks right and is presented correctly, and so we, you know, will constantly be making corrections on that until the final book is presented, so, but it doesn't have any impact on the budget whatsoever.
Other questions?
I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance...
We've got a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
Okay, at 7:21, we enter into the public hearing, and those who would like to speak can do so.
Mayor, can I just make one little clarification?
Yeah.
In talking to Julie today, and I talked to her today because we all got an email from Mr. Sandy, and one of his questions was about page 67, and that was a number question, and that was about the equation for the 2022 rate. One of those numbers in there, if you combine the INS and the MNO, did not add to the tax rate that we're proposing, and Julie clarified that for me, and it will be updated as well, that on that, and this is, I know this is technical, but just so that Mr. Sandy knows in that, I wanted to make sure after reading that that it wasn't a numbers issue, it was a clerical issue on that rate. It does not affect what's on page one of our proposed tax rate. Mr. Sandy, to Mr. Sandy's point, the MNO rate on page 67 was incorrect and will be corrected, but it doesn't impact anything in the budget.
Right, and I did go back and check, and in the tax rate calculation on page 311, it is correct there, and it is correct on the MNO rate.
So it in no way impacts financially.
It's not. That's just for presentation purposes only.
It was just a mistype that needs to be corrected.
All right, okay, do we have those who want to speak?
Yes, sir. We do have one signed up, Peggy McKay, and then we also have a citizen out here, I'll have him come in here.
Okay, all right.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. You mentioned the rate reduction in so many of the last years, and we do appreciate that, but the fact that the appraisals are going up so high, we never see a dollar value as a taxpayer. We just see more taxes due, and the only way that that can be changed, that action lies strictly with council, because you're the only one we have left. After the appraisal district comes along, you reduce the tax rate, but the value of our properties have been increased so much that each year we pay more and more taxes. So, of course, I'm going to ask if you won't reduce the tax rate so that that $400,000 more that it generates can be used by the citizens, and they, too, are suffering from the COVID problems. The other thing is, it was mentioned on that CO, this may be a miss, nothing that's important now since that issue's changed somewhat, but they were talking about six and a half million to seven million for the building, and that we were going to have some tax drop-off in 2021, and I can't find anywhere where any of the taxes or the debt service would be eliminated in 2021. Is that correct?
I'll respond to all of these at once, if you want to continue, I'll just respond to all of them at once.
Okay, water rates?
Okay.
On the water rates, the increase, by increasing the base rate, I feel penalizes the lower users, those who are trying to conserve water, and if you don't use any water, you have to pay that base rate anyway. If you are paying the current base rate and using the tier system, you will come out better, I'm quite sure, and there are a lot of people who travel and don't use that water. There are people who are conserving, who are paying a higher rate, and I think they're the ones who are penalized. And on top of that, we did have rate increases for three years, and that came from a study, and that study said it would stabilize the water revenue, but in looking at the water revenue, I don't see that there was any instability in the revenue that came in that would cause all the attention to adjust water rates. And the last thing on this is the water fund is charged with a street use fee that was 2% and 3% and then 4%, that's brought in a million dollars. When that money is taken out of the water fund to be used in the general fund, is that causing, does that have a relationship to the need to raise the water rates? And also, the water department's not the only one that causes repairs to the streets. As a matter of fact, I saw Atmos out there today doing that very thing, and I'm sure they're not charged a street fee, a street use fee. So it looks like it might be selectively applied to a convenient source. And again, I'm going to request that our budget is 349 pages, and it's, you get into this budget, and it's overwhelming to do anything, to study it, to see where the differences are, the things you like, the things you would like done differently. So could we please go back to the old way and have more time for the budget and for council to have the budget time, too?
All right, okay, did you keep a list?
I did.
Okay.
I did respond.
Would you have your response?
Okay, so first item was your question about property tax rates and revenue, so absolutely there's an increase in property tax value, and we recognize that, and I think we discussed that in detail, if you remember, back in 2019, going into 2020, and then also in 2021, because it was a big topic of conversation with appraisal district and others. And so, we do look at, you know, we recognize our revenues are going to be higher, but our expenses also go up every year, and so when we address things like we want to cash fund things, and we don't want to issue debt, and we don't want to do those kind of things, we do have expenses to cover as well just for regular operating, and so we are making an effort, and council knows this, to start putting some money into these capital project funds and putting some money into some of these asset replacement funds that potentially could create debt issuances later. So I guess that brings us back to the question to where whether we issue debt or whether we increase revenues, and so, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the money has to come from somewhere, and the simple fact that we're trying to keep the property tax rate down and continue to lower it whenever, you know, we can and can find funding availability, we certainly do that, and we have a lot of discussion about this in council workshops, and as a matter of fact, we came into May and June recommending that we keep the tax rate the same, and so we actually amended that literally within a week of finalizing the budget after we received the certified tax rolls and the property tax calculations from Barbarys of the Tax Assessor's Office. So we do keep that in mind, and of course, our budget workshops are open to citizens, as you know, and so we're more than happy, you know, to sit down and discuss any of these issues at any time and take input, and, you know, our phones are open and our emails are open, and so I think that's, you know, would be a good avenue as well. As far as the CO, there wasn't necessarily a tax drop-off. I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to there. We did have some debt that we were repaying, but also you have to consider that part of our capacity determination comes from comparing revenues and also comparing current debt. So there's a lot of factors that go into that, and Anne's here, you know, we want to speak to that more in detail because we do have an outside financial advisor that helps us determine capacity and those kind of things, so I'm more than happy to address that in more detail, you know, at any time if we need to do that. And the max was, so we said up to, and you do an up to on any time you do something like that, because we don't know what the rate's going to be, and we don't know what any cost of issuance is going to be, so that's why there's window any time a council is going to approve a debt issuance. As far as the water rates, I could speak to this in detail, but the short version of that is... But the short version of that is, um, we did do rate increases in fiscal year twenty, based on a twenty nineteen study, but that was the first rate that we had done in multiple years. Um, we haven't, we did not do a rate increase in fiscal year twenty-one specifically due to COVID. In fact, we didn't do any rate increases in the city whatsoever, um, that year. Our changes to fee schedules, other than anything that was going to be uh, pass through costs, um, that were going to be increases to us. But as far as the rate increase and and the base rate, so the idea is that water rates are weather dependent, so if it's really rainy, then water rates are down. And if it's really dry, then water rates are potentially higher, uh, just depending on how citizens use to, you know, use their water. So the idea is with higher rates at higher tiers, those who are using more water are paying more rates. So with the base rate idea, also keep in mind that there's a thousand gallons in there. So if you're a low user, you're not also getting charged the base rate plus the tier. You're only getting charged the base rate. So it really is kind of a budgeting tool for the average citizen who's maybe using five hundred gallons of water. You know exactly what your bill's going to be every month. There should be no fluctuation in that. So we really did take into consideration those lower users. We also have several forms of assistance for people who need it, um, whether it be local assistance or whether it be they come to us, um, I believe we put something in place, and I don't want to quote this exactly, but we did put something in place last year to where someone could come in. And under certain circumstances, we would modify their rate to the lowest rate. Or I I like I said, I don't want to quote exactly, but I'm sure happy to look that up and see what our internal policy is on that. Uh, but we absolutely did consider the low users, which is why you don't see a base rate increase at that lowest tier at all. So your average users, anyone fifty-five hundred gallons and under, is not seeing an increase to their tier. So the only increases we did to the tier rates were those higher rates, um, again, to encourage water conservation. Um, and with the idea too, that's by stabilizing water rates, our our maintenance doesn't change, uh, because it rains. And our personnel doesn't change because it rains. And so we can find ourselves in a situation really quickly to where we have less revenue than we need to cover the expenses that we have. So, um, with that, the other thing regarding the street use fee, so um, street use fee does go into the streets budget. And so that has progressively gone up. I believe it was at two percent for a number of years. Then it went to three percent, and since I've been here, it moved to four percent. And that does go to the streets department for maintenance and paving on city streets. Um, the water department runs heavy equipment up and down the roads. We run heavy trucks up and down the roads. We do make a lot of cuts, especially if there's sewer damage. They're cutting up the center of the road and having to make those kind of repairs. So there's a big cost um, associated there. Um, and your comment to Atmos, they do actually pay a franchise fee. So for cable and other companies that actually run things under our streets, there is a franchise fee, and they do pay that to the general fund, and that is in our budget under franchise fee. So that is in there. Um, and then as far as the budget being too large, um, that's something counsel can certainly direct us, as far as what do they want to see in the proposed budget? There are certain things that are legal requirements that we have to put in there, certain things that we don't. A lot of things we put in there for support for the decisions that are made, so that there's an understanding of why we're doing those kind of things. Um, as far as the extra time to do it, um, I'm just not sure where we'd find it. Um, you know, we have state mandates as far as when things have to be filed. So the last day of July, um, is the day that it has to be filed with the city secretary's office. Um, we start this process in February, it's a very long process. And keep in mind that the appraisal district isn't required to report to us until the last of July. So we really can't do anything for assuring up property tax rates or revenues until that time. So I don't know if that answers your questions.
All right, thank you, thank you, Julie. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, sir, George Barudy.
Much delay, I'm just in the room. Um, so George Barudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. I know, I still live there. Um, so a couple of things, one, um, we keep talking, we, over and over, every year, uh, we focus on the tax rate. Um, it'd be nice if you would, the only thing that counsel truly controls is the tax revenue they ask. Taxes, property taxes are really just gap funding. You come up with your service revenues and your permits or whatever. You come up with your expenses, and whatever you need in the middle, you create uh, property tax revenue, and you back into the rate. So if we could focus on that, and in that mind, and I'm not complaining, but just so you know, the increase of taxes this year is the largest one we've had for five years. So, but I think that's actually a good thing, because so long as you prioritize the money to go towards these maintenance and uh, operations things that we all know we need to do, you know, the set of sides for asset replacement. The other thing, uh, so one of the last things she just talked about, and uh, I think Peggy was talking about, not so much, I mean, maybe she was, but not shrinking the budget as much as those lead time workshops used to exist earlier in the season where people went, and even counsel was able to give um, their direction on um, what do you call it, policy choices, priority choices, if they did them earlier, um, it just ends up being more publicized. I mean, the county does it in a long drawn out thing, I wouldn't suggest going to meetings the way they do, but um, you might look at them anyways. Um, is there, so when she talks about the water rate, um, the, one of the questions I'd like to see uh, answer, I don't know where to go to find it, is the cost of service calculation for the water rates. Specifically, an issue is that we actually have a water and sewer system that's regulated by the Texas Water Code, and then we have a reuse system. The reuse system is actually mutually exclusive from the water uh, and sewer system. And so my question is, why are the rates charged to the reuse customers um, not paying their full share of the cost of service for that? And are the water and sewer system customers paying a cost of service that involves services not rendered to them? Namely reuse distribution and debt service for those things? So is there a way um, to locate how that cost of rate, uh, cost of service calculation, that would be great? The uh, something else, reuse separate system, base rate water, water system. Oh, yeah, okay, so the uh, the lack of a CO, um, that's not happening now, uh, essentially reduces our need for debt service uh, payments this year because I guess the CO was plan uh, proposing a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar debt service uh, payment in February. Um, does that mean that we can recalculate the debt service, the the property tax debt service rate? Uh, reduce it because we're not actually projecting that, um, the need to collect that amount? Um, by my little calculation, it was about a penny, but um, just a question, um, that's all, thanks.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone out on the Zoom component to speak.
Okay, okay, so that's our last speaker.
Well, I think Bruce wants.
Okay, and I'll tell you what, hold on just a second, and you want to answer some of Mr. Barudy's questions?
I'll give you a couple of quick answers um, to those questions. So, um, uh, lead time on workshops, of course, that's council direction. Um, you know, there's only so much.
When was our first one, was it March or April?
It was in April, and so really, you know, considering we're working on budgets, um, on the staff side, starting in February, we're essentially working nearly a year ahead, so it's really hard to back that up any further than February. And in fact, I would not recommend that, and being on that side of it, I can tell you it's really difficult because we don't really have anything to go on at that point, as far as we're really trying to build historical data and and things like that. And so, um, you know, each year's, yes, built on the last, but in the last and the last, but it's just difficult to start any sooner than that with audit, and we just finished a budget process. So there's just a lot to do. Um, but of course, the first one was in April, and then we had one, I believe, in June, and then again in July, so.
Not to mention that we we meet in May and talk about our priorities for the year as well, that get.
Right, so we're certainly under council direction.
And you have council election in May.
Right.
Yeah.
And then that council that's seated sets their priorities and then we create a priority-based budget. That's right.
Yeah, so, um, as far as the cost of service, I can't answer that um, tonight. That's not something I'm really prepared to answer, but we can certainly circle back to that. Um, and then to answer the question on the CO and the debt ratio, the the debt INS part, um, so essentially, the short-term note that we approved or that you approved earlier is going to be paid with INS capacity. So if we had been able to the issue the CO, then we would have potentially been looking at using fund balance uh, for those unfunded mandates. So instead of dipping into fund balance, we're able to issue that tax note in order to do that and stay out of our fund balance um, for those mandates.
All right, uh, water rate reg regarding general water and reuse?
Yeah, I can't answer that right now without digging into that a little bit more. That's not, that's a pretty big question.
Yeah, and and the basic thing is in terms of the reuse pond, you know, we receive revenue from where that is used, uh, but it saves drinking water.
That is true, and we do see a a huge um, irrigation um, use there that we would be using potable water for. So I think just simply from a water conservation standpoint, you have to look at the millions of gallons that we're pumping out of the reuse pond. And there is a direct connection between the water and and sewer system and reuse. So um, to say there's not, I'm not sure that's quite accurate, but I don't know that I fully understood that question. So I definitely want to circle back to that.
And again, those are two different permits with TCQ. I I I think it's a misnomer to think that those are two different systems.
You can't separate.
Uh, in reality, uh, we have one water system. Uh, and you know, that there's a, you can go through a very uh, intensive tour with Mr. Stuart Baron, our Public Works Director, that can uh, take you all the way from the raindrop uh, down to the treatment plant, uh, and then uh, through the entirety of our uh, treat water treatment system and into people's homes, and then through the the water uh, wastewater treatment system, uh, and then cycling back through to irrigation, uh, which then, you know, goes into our our river streams and into our aqua stream. So, um, in reality, we have one water system. Um, and so we have a cost of service. We do separate that out between water and wastewater, uh, but I think it's inaccurate and a misnomer to 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 call it anything differently, purely based off of its some TCQ permits.
And and without reuse, you know, the reality is the cost of uh, for maintenance and operations to our regular system could potentially go up because we're using more potable water. So I think there's arguments to be made both ways, but I can certainly come back to that question at a later time.
All right.
Yeah.
We have speaker.
Oh, Bruce, yeah.
Bruce Draky, six fifteen Earl Garrett. First up, I just want to say this is a monumental task every year. And going through the budget, Peggy, I struggle going through the budget myself and and ask for, you know, the copies as they're available and such, and sit in on the workshops as I can and stuff. And my first comment on that is over the years, I've been to a bunch of workshops, and they're very poorly attended. And I must admit, I have a hard time staying awake through them. I like doing it at the office where I can study. But I get it, I get it, we need to have that engaged and informed electorate that that is, wants to be a part of that process. And it's, and that is very important, and so I I like Peggy, like to go through the budget and all. But I also marvel at how good our staff is at putting that together, and just tonight was a wonderful example. We had questions come up that were unprepared for, but were answered professionally. Some of them need to go back. I get that same thing in my job every day, and it and it's, you know, and I have a computer screen in front of me where I'm referencing, you know, documents and everything as I'm going along. And to see that come right off the top and respond to people in a way that's really valuable and and helps settle their questions is really good. And so I I just really admire staff and our financial staff here. One of the things I also wanted to point out is that is so difficult about the budget and the city is things like the reuse water, the Arcadia, the River Trail. Those those in my mind, in my mind, are not profit centers, they're not revenue sources. I know reuse brings in some revenue, but it's not something the city makes money on as a corporation, as you said earlier. But it is something that changes the perception of the city and why we want to live here, and why we want to stay here, and why we want to raise our families here, and so do others. And those kinds of indirect benefits are extremely difficult to put a value on. But they are part of why we're here. And not just the people who've been here for many years, but the folks who've come here and love it. And I know folks who came here for COVID, and they've already sold their homes somewhere else because they want to stay. And they're looking for jobs. And that's because we have all this stuff, the sports complex, reuse water, Arcadia, the River Trail, a beautiful downtown, the EIC that's doing things about film and and manufacturing, and the clean manufacturing and stuff that we're trying to encourage. Those kinds of things are very difficult to put a value on, but they don't necessarily bring a direct revenue that we see because we see it through our sales tax, which has been rising even through the pandemic. We see it through our hotel tax, which has also been rising through the pandemic. And we see it through the way that city staff manages our finances and has done so very well over the years. And we're really a very well-managed city with a very low debt limit that's self-imposed, that we keep ourselves to. And those kinds of things are really hard for people to understand. The hardest thing for people to understand, though, is that if I get money from hotel tax or I get EIC money, I can only use that for certain things. And staff is brilliant at keeping track of all those different funds and how and where that money can actually be used. And then folks come in and they're angry, well, why didn't you use money used for this for that? Well, the fact of the matter is, most of the time I've heard that in over twenty years ago in the city council meetings, it's because I can't. The state law doesn't allow me to use funds from this for that. You guys do a great job, this council, the one before it, the one before that, have all done it, and staff should be commended. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, we're going to start serving coffee at the budget workshops. Yeah, all right. If, okay, let me, let me see. How many years has the city gotten awards for the the budget, the way the budget is presented?
Probably longer than I've been working.
Longer than you've been, anybody know?
I don't know.
It's over twenty years.
Over twenty.
Over twenty years.
Yes.
Yeah, from a state organization saying, hey, this is good.
It's national, actually.
And national?
It's a national organization.
Wow, wow, that's good. All right, any other questions? Well, let me, let me, we're closing out the public hearing at seven forty-six. Any other questions for Ms. Barrens, and then we'll move on.
Really great job tonight, really answering those questions.
Thank you.
And and putting the budget together. Uh, I talked to Julie briefly, um, just to continue on what we were talking about, just little typos, things I think a couple of times a year, said twen- fiscal year twenty twenty instead of twenty twenty-one. Those are all going to be updated, and when we make our final approval on on those, all the typos and the little elements that we find.
All right, good.
Thank you, Julie, for your good answers.
Everybody, it's a long, it's a long effort.
A couple of questions that I have, um, there was, and these are just simple ones, I think, there was a line item for about seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand for the Louise Hayes dam. Are we expecting something happening there?
Is this within the capital budget, or can you be more specific to what you're referencing?
What page were you referring?
Yeah, let me, let me see where, I I jotted it down here. Like it was in the. It'll take me a while to get to it, but you you can res- uh, give me a response offline to rest of council.
Yeah, if you want to send me the details on exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, I'll send you the details that way.
It'd be a lot easier, I mean.
Yes, yeah, I'll do that.
That's that's not ringing a bell, but if I had specifics, I could certainly respond.
Sure, okay, we'll do that. And then the other one is the irrigation expenses for the golf fund, another golf fund, and I try to look back at the sports complex. So I know in the previous budget for the current fiscal year we're in right now, it wasn't in there. And I try to look back to see, was it in another category, and and where is that in?
That is correct, so this past year, um, Ashley actually requested that we break out reuse for that because they wanted to track easier exactly how much money they were spending in reuse. Typically, um, with all of our other departments, it's always been lumped in water and sewer. Um, but that was a request.
The water and sewer fund?
Well, water and sewer expense line, so the thirty twenty line, yes.
Okay, under there, okay.
And so we created a thirty twenty-one is what you'll see, um, the line item. And it's only in golf, and that's just because they specifically asked to track that separately, just because they were using a large amount, large amount of water with overseeding, and they really want to take a close look at that, so we separated that out for. So, and that's something we kind of do department-specific, if someone has a specific need or they're tracking a specific metric or something like that, they're really looking at, we break that out for them.
Okay, so if I were to look at the, I'm looking at the golf fund right now in the expenditures line item, I won't find it here, or I will?
You may not, because it just happened this year, but at year end you will. Does that make sense? Hold on.
Yes, okay.
I don't know, is the answer.
Okay.
Without looking at it.
And that's for both the golf fund and the sports complex, right?
Sports complex is water and sewer together.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
Okay, that's, I thought so. I'm looking at a two hundred for the golf fund.
That's revenue page, so flipped to two, yeah. So you're gonna see utilities, it's lumped in there.
It's in utility, okay.
The way these specific line items are broken out is by category.
Okay.
And so they're, you know, you can see how they're grouped. And so the reuse specifically is. is, in this case, in that utilities line item. When we look at it on our side, it is broken out to a separate detail line item. But that's how it's grouped. In every department, it's grouped like that.
And would you mind just for the golf fund specifically, what else is included in the utilities?
All the utilities.
Just everything?
Correct. So that's going to be electric, natural gas, water, sewer, reuse water, all those components.
And that was just upon the Ashley's request?
No, if you look at every department, their utilities is grouped as utilities. So I guess what I'm saying is, if you, if you were to look at what I see every day, her reuse water is broken out. And that's because she wants to see it separately, and that's perfectly fine. But at the end of the day, it's still a utility.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering why we don't have it as a separate line item. I know, because that's where a large.
Well, because this 350 pages would be about 600 pages if I did that. Because within, for example, utilities, there's probably five or six different specific line items that we would have to break out if we did it that way. And same thing goes for professional services, same thing goes for, you know, multitude of these that are grouped together, might have five or more expense lines within those. And that's certainly available, you know, if that's something you wanted to see specifically, we can certainly provide that. But for the purposes of financial reporting, and especially when we're going through audit, this is how the auditors request it. They want to see it grouped like this. They don't want to see how much electricity we spent. They want to see, what was your utility expense as a whole?
Okay.
What was your supply expense as a whole? And that's why you don't see a whole, you know, page worth of supply expense, because we have a whole page worth of supply expense.
Right, no, that makes sense.
So they're just grouped by category when it comes to the expense side.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Counsel, oh.
No, I said that's all I had. That's all I had, yes, thank you.
Counsel, there are several motions and votes that we must work through as required by state law. Could I have the first motion?
I'll make that first motion. I move to approve ordinance number 2021-20 to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year 2022 on the first reading.
All right.
A second.
We've got a motion, a second. Ms. McLenon, would you take a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Blackburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right. Okay, could I get the second motion?
I will make that also. I move to ratify the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous fiscal year.
All right. Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that. And I would just like to clarify for the public why there's two different motions. State law just requires us to make the second motion if we're obtaining more revenue from property taxes. I was a little confused of that myself, so just for the public to know.
Okay, all right. All right. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, and it passes unanimously. Okay. Let's move to six B. Ms. Barrens, are you going to give Ann the night off?
I guess, you know. She drove all this way.
I know.
She can do the freightway.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Thank you for being here. And I just wanted to personally apologize for the way that you were treated by some of the citizens that were here at the last time that you...I really want to appreciate you and your efforts on behalf of the city for what you do. So thank you for, and thank you for making the trip tonight.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. McLenon, would you read in six B?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2021-21, an ordinance levying an ad lorem tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas, for the fiscal year 2022, providing for apportioning each levy for specific purposes, and providing when taxes shall become due and when the same shall become delinquent if not paid. There are no citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
All right. Does somebody need to go get Ms. Barrens?
We don't have anything else to present, Mayor. This was prescribed essentially within your budget presentation. We've got really the same slide of the outline of dates provided to you that we'd be happy to go over again, but.
The only thing that I would like to go over is the motion in and of itself, because it is required to be read per state law. And I think that there needs to be some clarification and some discussion before there's a second.
Okay. Is, is Mr. Hoppe going to do the clarification?
Well, the problem is, I think we need to read the motion.
Move in second and then discuss?
Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay.
I could speak to the motion if you'd like for me to. Or you can read it either way.
Yeah, the only reason I want to read it is because it's, it's a little deceptive, and it needs some clarification before it's voted on. And the motion, I make the motion to approve ordinance number 2021-21, and that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5093, which is effectively a 4.6% increase in the tax rate. So now, can you explain why it's not really an increase even though?
I'll go ahead and second it, and then we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, so when we say that we're voting to increase the tax rate, essentially the statute defines it any increase as the percentage by which the proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue tax rate. And so although we are lowering the tax rate, that is not lowering it all the way to that no new revenue tax rate. And so by state statute, they define that as an increase in the tax rate.
Okay. But for public's benefit, our tax rate is being reduced from what it was last year.
That's correct. It is being reduced, and then depending on the value of your property, that is essentially how you get your tax bill, right? So your appraisal may have gone up, your appraisal may have gone down. But the tax rate that is adopted by this council is applied to your property value by the appraisal district, totally legally separate from the city. And then that is what determines your tax bill. Your tax bill may go up, or it may go down, depending on where your appraisals ended up.
Okay.
And then, of course, if those that have the over 65 exemption are, have a tax ceiling, and their taxes don't go up at all.
Right.
So they go down. They go down when the tax rate goes down, if they're appraised value, but they never go past the ceiling.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, which is a large portion of our Kerrville tax roll.
Other discussion from the council?
Thanks for clarifying that, Brendan.
I'd just like to make a comment that I know there are some citizens, and some of our constituents out there that would have liked or preferred us to go with the no new revenue tax rate. Of course, understanding with the budget that we've seen, what we're going to do with those property tax revenues, why the proposed tax rate is what it is. I appreciate staff coming to us with a reduced tax rate than what originally was possibly going to be proposed. So I appreciate that. And of course, we understand, and I think council does recognize, that people are still recovering from everything with COVID that happened, especially restaurants and homeowners. But we're doing what we can. And of course, with the budget just being adopted as it was, we're now, in a sense, restricted on voting with this as it is. Otherwise, there's no sense to vote this down, and we already voted for the budget, because it's based off of what our tax revenue is going to be. But I just want everybody to understand, I think council does recognize that. And for the, in the future, it may be beneficial if we can look at a couple of other options. I have no problem with what we're going to be doing tonight, but just other options so that public knows that we've done our due diligence, and we didn't just go down one path and stick with that.
All right. Okay. The public hearing is open at seven fifty-nine.
Ms. Francina, do we have any callers?
Okay.
We have no callers.
We have no callers.
We have no callers.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you sure?
Okay. Seven fifty-nine, twenty-six, the public hearing is closed. Now, I will need a motion, but first.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, 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 we got the motion, second, thank you. Okay. This motion to adopt an ad lorem property tax rate must be made using words required by the Texas Property Tax Code. The tax code also requires the vote on this motion to be a record vote, and that is a roll call vote. When we are saying that we are voting to increase the tax rate, which we've already talked about, the statute defines increase as a percentage by which the proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue tax rate. May I have a motion to adopt the property tax? We've already got it. Motion already, and a second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by the.
Roll call.
What?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Oh, roll, roll call, yeah, all right.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Clarkson?
Yes.
Mayor Blackburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hughes?
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, seven A. Would you read that in for us, Ms. McLenon?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2021-18, second reading, an ordinance amended in chapter 60 Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, chapter 60, more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 3210 Riverside Drive, and out of the Wallace survey number 112, abstract number 360, and within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single-family residential zoning district R1 to a general commercial zoning district C3, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date and order in publication. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
This is second reading. There's no staff presentation. Counsel, any questions?
I feel like Drew should say something. I mean, he waited here and, you know.
Oh.
Just close how he's doing, you know.
Okay.
No changes. If there's any questions, be happy to answer.
Would you like to elaborate?
It's okay if you don't.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay. Any, any other counsel, any counsel questions on this?
I would like to move that we adopt ordinance number 2021-18 on the second reading.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay, thank you. Seven B, Ms. McLenon?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2021-19, second reading, an ordinance amended chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 501 Florence, consisting of lot 19 and part of lot 20, block 25, Westland Place, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a residential transition zoning district R2 to a neighborhood commercial zoning district C1, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay. Mr. Paxton, would you like to tell us there's no change?
No change unless somebody says no.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
No, I move to approve ordinance number 21, 2021-19 on the second reading.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it carries unanimously. All right, eight A, Ms. McLenon?
Resolution number 38-2021, and resolution approving negotiated settlement between the Atmos Cities Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corporation regarding the company's 2021 rate review mechanism filing. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Hayes.
This is my annual time to shine. This is an action item we take every year. It's generated really by Atmos, going through a process of requesting a rate increase. And so if adopted, this resolution will approve a rate settlement, basically with Atmos Energy Corporation, which is Atmos Gas, which provides our natural gas service here in the area. I think, hopefully, the agenda bill provides good history and the current status of the revised rate review mechanism, which is this process, this legal process, that the city, as a member of the Atmos Cities Steering Committee, uses to review rate increases requested by Atmos. And again, this is an annual negotiation, an annual process. If you look at the recitals on the resolution, I think they also do a good job of outlining the process and the action involved. You know, just, just to be real brief, whenever Atmos seeks a rate increase, they must provide notice to the city, and we have some sort of control, well, not some sort of, we have legal control over that. And there's ways that we can challenge that. What we've done over the years, gosh, it's probably been going back 10 years, we've banded together with, with other cities that are served by Atmos, and we've created this Atmos Cities Steering Committee. And so once Atmos presents their rate increase to the cities, we then get into the steering committee, and they hire consultants, and attorneys, and number crunch, and negotiate down a, hopefully down a rate for the coming year. In essence, the company, Atmos, claimed that its cost of service for 2020, so this goes back to the end of 2020, entitled it to the additional system-wide revenues of 43.4, 43.4 million. And system-wide, that's, you know, I think about three quarters of the state. But after applying this process, which is the rate review mechanism process, and analyzing the information presented by both sides, the parties negotiated a settlement whereby Atmos would receive an increase of 22.78 million from the Atmos Cities Steering Committee cities, but with a two-month delay. So this, if you all approve this, this really will not go into effect until December 1st of this year. And so the steering committee and its legal counsel consultants are recommending that the cities adopt the resolution before you approving this negotiated rate settlement, resolving the RRM filing, and implementing the rate change. And here's the important part, I think. The impact of the settlement on the average residential rates is an increase of $1.28 per month, which is a 2.2% increase. And then the increase for an average commercial usage will be $4.03 a month, or a 1.61% increase. And so, all that being said, I tried to get through that as quickly as I could, but I'm happy to answer any questions. But I'm also recommending that you all adopt the resolution on this one time.
Mr. Hayes, on the average bill comparison here, base rates test year ending December 21, 2020, there are 75 line items there. Could you break that down for us?
I could. It would probably be here till eleven o'clock, and I might have to phone a friend, but.
No, no.
I just want you to shine.
Okay, yeah. Counsel, counsel questions? All right, do your motion on this matter.
I move to adopt resolution number 38-2021.
I second that motion.
All right. Okay, all in favor, with the raised hand, passes unanimously. Okay, eight B, Ms. McLenon?
City's ongoing preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus and declaration of local state of disaster due to a public health emergency review of March 20th, 2020. And there are no public speaker, or I'm sorry, there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay.
Mayor and council have a presentation for you regarding the update in the COVID. The last report out was at the end of April, and since there, we've been monitoring and surveillance, the COVID response for Kerrville and Kerr County. So this is a brief update on that. Currently, the numbers that we're at, so there are 215 active cases. We are currently reporting from DSHS, 98 deaths, and about 4,900 recovered. As of today, there are 31 hospitalized. The hospital peaked yesterday at 34. That tied our highest that we've seen in Kerr County since January 8. The unofficial number was that actually was higher yesterday, and that is one of the main point of concerns as we talk through the presentation.
I'm not going to interrupt you every slide, I promise. But now that there are self-testing kits, does that throw off the reporting, too?
It does not. So the self-testing kit still has a way to scan. It has a QR that you can scan.
Are you serious?
It gets reported at the state level. The same self-testing kits that are available over the counter, the same ones that we use at the fire, police, orphan, and the city. So on the Viomix now is one of those.
But the, the end user has to do something in order to report that number?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
No, do that. So that, that's part of it in there.
Okay, so it could potentially, it's possible.
Absolutely. No, I would, I would say absolutely that they're hired. So, because that's active cases reported.
Right.
People do have.
Because we didn't used to have a way to self, to, to self-test.
Correct. If I just, if I choose to test, correct.
Right.
I may just be homesick.
Sure.
Okay. The numbers that we've seen has been a steady climb. We've been monitoring closely since April with the strike reasons in the South Texas region and San Antonio, monitoring for Barra County and outside Barra County. We've all seen that surge. This is the third surge that we've seen. The difference that we're seeing this time with the surge... The difference that we're seeing this time with the surge that we're matched up with the urban, with the San Antonio, where before we were a little bit behind, which helped a little bit in regards to the hospitalization, and that is one of the challenges. So you'll see, it's, it's clearly a surge is where we're headed. This is active cases, as opposed to down below shows the hospitalizations on there. That does show 34, which was yesterday's number, but 31 is high, and that is extremely high for Peterson to be able to manage that. We're in constant communications with them. They've been managing 28, and 28 is when they're really coming out to the public to really kind of help them flatten the curve. And now since then, we've, we've been up to the 30s, 34. So local update per DSHS website, this is one of the things kind of concerning. Kerr County residents, our vaccination percentage. So currently, we're at 43% in Kerrville that are eligible. So this is 12-plus that are eligible to receive that, and the Texas average is 55%. For those that are 65-plus, so 61%, and the state average is 76%. So we are below the average for Kerr County. Vaccinations by age have that, which is good information. The 12 to 15-year-old age range, which is the Pfizer, there are 300 that received the vaccine at about 2,300 eligible. And then the numbers for the 16 to 65-year-olds, that's about a, actually, I'm sorry, the 12 to 15, that's about 13%. And then the 16 to 65-year-old range, that's 37% are vaccinated. Then the highest that we have is the 65-plus at 62%. So local updates, so meetings and, and the collaboration. So we've continued to monitoring this since April, since my last report out here. We have, we do have our community leadership meetings. They involve the city, the county, Peterson, our ISDs, not just Kerrville, Center Point, Ingram, Hunt are also invited to that. Our Convention Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, and the KEDC, and then the K-PUB. So we have those currently back in. We've been doing those every two weeks with the mayor and trying to make sure we get that.
Where are those, are those at City U or?
Currently, we're holding those at Peterson, so they're offering one of their classrooms up there. It's a very large classroom that we're able to kind of get the social distancing for. So coming up, our next meeting that we do have scheduled, we met last week. Next one is going to be Thursday, September 2nd. And then there'll be an important community report out on Zoom, as we've done in the past, on Thursday, September 7th at 2:30. So we'll have some more information to provide our community at that point. So what's changed, I guess, since our last community meeting? So big one, the vaccine updates. So the Pfizer vaccine now 16 years and older have received full FDA approval. So that was on August 23rd. So the 12 to 15-year-old age range is still under the Emergency Use Authorization, and that is a two-dose regiment, and I'll tell you where you can get those in a second. The Moderna is still there, that's 18-plus under the Emergency Use Authorization. So that is currently in a phase three study. They submitted back in June, they started submitting data for the phase three study, and they anticipate probably about, they started that process one month after Pfizer did to kind of give you a potential timeline of when that would be full FDA approval. And then Johnson, Johnson is the single dose, that is for 18 and above, which is still under the Emergency Use Authorization, and they anticipate possible FDA approval at the end of the year. So local vaccine availability, the good news is that the vaccine is available locally. HEB number one, the main, on Main Street, and HEB number two, South. Monday through Friday, 12 to 5, walk-ins are welcome. Saturday and Sunday, they're only doing appointment only. They do have all three available at the HEB. Walgreens, Monday through Friday, 9, 9A to 9P, you can register for a time. So, or you can just walk in, I was able to walk in with the kids. So it was very easy to get registered for that. It was no different than registering for the flu. Saturday, 9 to 6, and then Sunday, 10 a.m. to 6. They have the Pfizer only at the Walgreens. The other two stores we're monitoring, Walmart, Walmart currently has the Moderna. They're working on transitioning to the Pfizer. And so they also allow the walk-ins, Monday through Friday, 9A to 9P, and Saturday, Saturday 9A to 7 p.m., and then Sunday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And then CVS only has the Moderna. They did not talk about transitioning to the Pfizer, but they are available also, Monday through Friday, 11 a.m. to 4, Saturday, Sunday, 11 to 4. So readily available locally. So in closing, talk about a few that COVID-19 is still a public health threat. The, the biggest communication and conversation that we've had through this and through the summer, and as we've seen the change over the last month, has really been with Peterson Regional. That impacts our healthcare system, and they're asking our community to kind of help flatten that curve. So they're at a capacity, they're at a, they're at a challenge of how they're managing their patients, and this has a ripple effect, not just for the COVID patients. This has a ripple effect for other patients that are trying to receive treatment there in the community from either a heart attack, a stroke, or just anyone. So this is our friends and our family that are having to go there, maybe not for COVID. So this puts a strain on the healthcare system. That's what we monitor. So that's what we watch closely. If this is an illness that's in the community, doesn't impact the healthcare, different conversation. But it's impacting our local. They are our only hospital that we have. So they are asking for our help. So I asked for that and obviously put out there, so ask anyone to please reconsider the vaccine, especially the Pfizer. It did get the FDA approval, so under, under the time that we kind of anticipated, so that is positive news. Still ask to follow the social distancing as we're doing here, and always wear a mask to kind of protect yourself and protect others if you can't do the social distancing. Great information is available, Department of State Health Services has really kind of added to their website and their webpages for the information. They have a lot of information on the vaccine, a lot of information on the testing, great links to the CDC and the FDA. If anyone has any questions on the vaccine or look at it, the FDA information is there, so it is FDA approved. So I think, as I said earlier, not, not Facebook approved, but FDA approved. So please gather the information that you need, or any questions, feel free to contact Peterson or your physician if you need more on that. And that is my report, any questions or comments?
Any locations where people can get tested? A lot of my constituents are reaching out to me, asking me that.
I did not bring it with me on there. I know with Peterson Regional, they still do have it available. So there was a bit of a shortage they were managing through, I don't know the current situation. Currently, they do have the testing available, the over-the-counter, it's called Binax Now, B-I-N-A-X-N-O-W. And they do have that available at Wal, Walmart, I know for sure Walgreens, and I believe CVS has that. There are two tests in there, I believe, they're roughly $10 a test. So it's those costs. And we're using those same ones for the fire department and for public safety out there that we're testing. Very reliable, and made a game changer for us in order to protect our, our in-house, and definitely our fire department.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
The, is, is the urgent care, Peterson Urgent Care doing testing?
They were doing some changes up to that, and I don't have that information in front of me. But I know Peterson is still providing that, so.
Yeah. You may not want to give a, a number on this, but we're seeing some cases in the schools?
Yeah, the report I saw last week was for, for Kerrville ISD, was 67 cases of staff and students. That was the last number I saw there, so.
So I have a question about that.
I'm sorry?
I have a question about that. If somebody tests positive in school, what are they doing about that child's exposure to all the other students? I mean, are they just isolating that one student? Are they isolating everybody in his class? Are they isolating the entire school? What are they doing about that?
Most only discussion that we've had with the school districts is that the only ones that are isolating are those that test COVID positive, that they're not doing the contact tracing that they were last year. So they're monitoring if they're sick, they're testing for that.
And are they quarantining for like 10 days or whatever if they test positive?
Yes, correct. So, so they, they will have to remain home for the 10 full days at that point. So, and as a parent with a middle school and high school, you always get the letters. They're keeping parents informed of the numbers in the middle school and the high school when they have a staff or a student test positive, but they're not doing the contact tracing, is my understanding. And I believe that was across the board for all the schools.
Yeah, yeah, right. And our school districts meet with us when we meet in these community leadership meetings and give us reports on what's happening in each of the schools and where things are. Counsel, other questions?
Yes, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you very much. Okay. Do you have items for future agenda?
I have one, possibly another, depending on what counsel wants to do. But the first one is to review and consider any revisions to our ethics policy. And there's actually a provision in it that requires counsel to periodically review it and consider any revisions. And the last time it was done was, I think around April of 2017, so a little bit over four years. So having that, either the sec, the first or second, honestly, for this one, it doesn't really, I don't mind whether it's on a regular meeting or a workshop agenda, but sometime in December, just to get that looked at and done with.
Okay, to review our ethics policies?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do we, and you make that in a motion?
Sure, yes, sir, I'll make that in a motion.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
We've got a motion, second. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the raised hand? Okay, yeah, okay.
That's all I have.
Right, okay. It is 8:21, which is late for us, but if you want an executive session, let me know and make a motion. Ms. Clarkson?
No, sir.
All right, all right. We adjourn.